Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For President, Vice President, Board Members, Dr. Green. This afternoon, I would like to introduce Wisdom Gordon. Wisdom is a 10th grade student at Lanier High School. She's the daughter Raphael Gordon and Candace Scott. Her principal is Dr. Valerie Bradley. Wisdom is a member of the Lanier High School National Honor Society. She is the Secretary for the Lanier Student Government Association, and a member for the Lanier High School Health Program. Wisdom's career aspirations are to graduate Lanier as valedictorian and enroll in Mississippi State University to take prerequisites for medical school. Her future goal is to become a pediatrician.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Feed it.
Thank you. Wisdom, do you have any family members here with you? We're going to ask your family members to stand. Thank you.
Future pediatrician.
Now, we have our Words of Encouragement by Caleb Rhodes. Caleb Rhodes is a 16-year-old sophomore scholar. Is he here?
No, he hasn't arrived yet.
Okay. Well, we, Board Members, we have five members present, one member on the phone. We have a quorum. We have an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Salute.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Fugers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motion has been approved. Next on the agenda is approving of the minutes. Board Members, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for January 7, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Sevekt has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And now, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Greetings, Board Members, JPS Administrators and Staff, our parents, community partners, all those in attendance here this evening, and those watching live stream. We'll begin, as we typically do, with a video presentation produced by our talented instructional television production team.
The Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees unanimously approved the district's Optimizing for Equity School Redesign Plan during its January 7th Board Meeting. Optimizing for Equity will expand the district's pre-kindergarten opportunities, support the development of a world-class teaching and learning center, and generate cost savings that pave the way for long-term strategic investments. The plan builds upon the district's five-year strategic action plan. The school redesign plan calls for the following: repurposing of Van Winkle Elementary School into a school exclusively for pre-kindergarten scholars; closure of Bar Elementary School; consolidation of Hardy Middle School with a newer and updated Blackburn Middle School; repurpose Hardy Middle School into a sports athletic complex; consolidation of Cywell Middle School with a newer and updated Cardosa Middle School; repurposing of Rowan as a district teaching and learning center; and launch a community task force to develop a long-term plan to strengthen schools in the Lanier High School feeder pattern. To learn more about this plan, please visit our website. JPS scholars who are interested in careers in agriculture now have a location where they can learn everything about that subject. Wingfield High School is home to the Academy of Natural Resource Utilization, a program designed to help students develop skills in the agriculture industry. The program offers pre-apprenticeship in agriculture and will expose students to agribusiness and entrepreneurship. It is made possible through a partnership with Heinz Community College and the Mississippi Apprenticeship Program. Congratulations to the Murrah Girls and the Wingfield Boys Basketball Teams. They are the 2019 Pepsi JPS Holiday Basketball Tournament Champions. The Murrah Lady Mustangs claimed the championship after defeating the Vicksburg Missy Gators. Sophomore Malani Galbraith was named the game MVP. The 5'9" forward scored 18 points and had 10 rebounds in the title game. The team's head coach is Anson Ross. The Wingfield Falcons defeated the Provine Rams to capture the boys' championship. Jaquan Curry was the game MVP. He scored 14 points and had 12 rebounds in the game. Spencer Gatlin is the team's head coach. The Pepsi JPS Holiday Basketball Tournament takes place annually during the winter holiday break. The tournament is sponsored by Brown-Boppling Group. For the latest information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website. Connect with us on Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube.
I want to thank the team, as always, for producing the video with our announcements. Just because I happened to be at the game yesterday, and I'm aware, so I want to call out and congratulate our Lanier Boys Basketball Team for their win last night against Crystal Springs. They, that was a really good game, really good game. There were several good games in the tournament that was hosted at Lanier High School. So, again, kudos to our Lanier Boys Basketball Team and the coaching staff, and to Lanier family. And thank you for hosting that event yesterday. It was a wonderful tournament. Forest Hill is known for its scholars excelling in both athletics as well as the arts. Since 2017, Choir Director Ms. May has been doing an amazing job, amazing work with the Forest Hill Singers. They have achieved superior and excellent ratings at the Mississippi High School Activities Association State Performance Assessment. This outstanding choir has traveled to Dallas, Texas, to perform and will travel to Orlando, Florida during the spring break with the Forest Hill High School Band. I'm delighted at this time to have Ms. May and the Forest Hill Choir join us now to share their magnificent vocal talents.
Greetings to the board and everyone here. I am Lethem May, Choir Director at Forest Hill High School, under the direction of Mr. Tori Hampton. These are the Forest Hill Singers. We're going to bring you one selection today entitled "Right on King Jesus." With Black History Month vastly approaching, I thought it'd be a good thing and fitting to sing a good Negro spiritual on today. So, we definitely hope that you all enjoy "Right on King Jesus."
(Singing) Right on, King Jesus. No man can I hinder me. Right on, King Jesus, right on. No man can I hinder me. No man can I hinder me. No man can I hinder me. Right on, King Jesus. No man can I hinder me. Right on, King Jesus, right on. No man can I hinder me. 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 In that grave in the morning, fare thee well, fare thee well. In that grave in the morning, fare thee well, fare thee well. In that grave in the morning, fare thee well, fare thee well. In that grave in the morning, fare thee well, fare thee well. When I get to heaven, gonna wear a robe. No man can I hinder me. Gonna see King Jesus sitting on a throne. No man can I hinder me. When I get to heaven, gonna wear a robe. No man can I hinder me. Gonna see King Jesus sitting on a throne. No man can I hinder me. No man can I hinder me. No man can I hinder me. No man can I hinder, hinder me.
Thank you, Ms. May, and to the Forest Hill Singers. Board Members are saying, "Just one, just one." But thank you so much for joining us and sharing your talents with us. It's really important to us that we continuously exhibit the talents and the skill and the passion that so many of our young people bring. And so, just thank you. And thank you again, Ms. May, for your hard work in preparing these young folks. Good luck in your presentation in Florida. Is that Florida? In Orlando, Florida. Right. Show them what you're made of. At this time, I believe I will, I want to ask Caleb Rhodes, who was on task to share words of encouragement, and to ask him to join us at the podium and share those words. Mr. Rhodes is a pretty busy dude. So, we thank you for making time with us this evening. Chairman Johnson, if you're okay, I can share his bio?
Yes.
Caleb J. Rhodes is a 16-year-old sophomore scholar at the University of South Jackson, better known as Forest Hill High School. He currently holds a 3.8 GPA and is a member of the National Honor Society and the National Beta Club. Since 2015, Rhodes has worked as a funeral director at the West Haven Memorial Funeral Home. He is also a member of the Superintendent's Scholar Advisory Council, the president of his sophomore class, an S1 of the Forest Hill High School JROTC, 5th Battalion Staff, and a drill team commander. Caleb is working towards his goal of graduating as the Forest Hill School Valedictorian or Saludatorian. He's leaving a little space there for himself. For the class of 2022. After high school, he plans to join the United States Army and study mortuary science with the goal of owning multiple funeral homes all across the United States of America. I give you Caleb Rhodes.
Great afternoon. To our great Superintendent, Dr. Green, the Board of Trustees, and all those who are here with us in attendance. It is a great pleasure of mine to be here today to offer you all words of encouragement. When asked to give words of encouragement, I was faced with what a semi-challenge. Not the challenge was not to encourage my peers, not even to this great audience, but my challenge came when I was asked to encourage this great Board of Trustees. As a scholar, it is easy for me to encourage my fellow peers, for we are faced with many of the same situations. As a funeral director, I am trained to encourage families on how to cope with the loss of their loved ones. But with them both, I am able to relate. So, what can I, 16-year-old Caleb Rhodes, a sophomore from Forest Hill, encourage this great Board? Those on this Board are people who have been where I've been, who are able to say that they have achieved greater than what I have yet to accomplish. In honor to our dear Martin Luther King, I'd say, "March on." Not necessarily a pomp and circumstance, but keep marching in the direction of greatness as you help lead our great school district to success. For it is so simple to be deterred by circumstantial situations that seem to have the odds stacked, not just against the scholars of JPS, but also those who lead this great school district. Oftentimes, encouragement is given to those that follow, not to those that lead. So, my encouragement to you is to keep marching on forward. And to remember the vision, as a scholar, sometimes it's hard to comply with the directions of things we don't understand. But as leaders, you must remain steadfast and unmovable, as Paul says of the Church of Corinth in 1 Corinthians 15:58. In closing remarks, I want to thank this awesome Board for having me here to do words of encouragement. I want to thank this great audience. May God bless you, may God keep you.
Thank you, Caleb. Do we have a gift?
No.
We're going to take a picture. As I mentioned in his bio, Mr. Rhodes serves on the Superintendent's Scholar Advisory Council. And when I tell you this young man, he's already demonstrating great leadership and insight. It's a pleasure to work with him and to have him talk about some of the experiences of he and his classmates and schoolmates, but also being a partner in leading us and helping us think through where we go next as a district. It's just been a pleasure. So, again, thanks to Mr. Rhodes and appreciate what he's brought and his thoughts that he shared with us. As with all of our academic programs, we have been carefully evaluating the value and sustainability of our special courses and program offerings, such as IB, APAC, and Advanced Placement. At this time, I'll invite Dr. Kimiana Burke, the Executive Director of our Office of Teaching and Learning, to join us and share some information that supports our overall academic performance as well as our offerings. Dr. Burke?
I think this is a setup. How do I come behind that young man?
Good luck.
You're amazing. Okay. Good evening to President Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the Board, and the community. It's only fitting that I speak to our special programs and course offerings tonight after this amazing showcase of talent by our Forest Hill Choir and also our outstanding member of the JROTC. I'm going to see if this works first. No. All right. You'll do it? Okay. All right. So, as you know, now is the time that we begin to prepare for early registration, teacher recruitment, and also recruitment of students to participate in our special programs and courses. So, tonight's presentation will provide an overview of special course offerings and programs in JPS and discuss our efforts to improve and/or sustain quality courses and programs in alignment with the district's strategic plan. The JPS Strategic Plan outlines the district's commitments to our mission of developing scholars through world-class learning experiences. These strategic commitments underscore the courses and programs that I will discuss tonight. Our first commitment to a strong start; commitment number two, to innovative teaching and learning; commitment number three, talented and empowered teams; and commitment four, joyful learning environments. For our special course offerings, as you know, this slide does not include an exhaustive list, and I believe that you now have in hand choice cards and also a booklet that outlines the course offerings from the Career Development Center. Tonight, I will discuss for special course offerings our Open Doors Gifted Program, Strings in Schools, the AP Program, Dual Enrollment and Dual Credit, Foreign Language, Career Development Center, JROTC, and High School Academies. The Open Doors Gifted Education Program encourages and nurtures inquiry, flexibility, decision-making, thinking skills, self-evaluation, and divergent thinking. Open Doors serves intellectually gifted students in grades 2 through 8. All first-grade students in JPS are screened for entry, and those who meet the cut score are allowed to participate in the program. With Strings in Schools, JPS continues its collaboration with the Mississippi Symphony Orchestra. This program impacts over 3,000 students in grades kindergarten through 12 through ensemble visits, informances, full orchestra educational concerts, and string instrument instruction. And this is available in select schools. Championed by the College Board, our Advanced Placement Program connects students to college success and to opportunity. It expands access to higher education and also allows students who pass AP exams an opportunity to earn college credit and placement. It is our commitment to have more students to participate in these types of rigorous programs. And students are encouraged to participate, and there is no application process. So, with dual enrollment and dual credit, it offers structured opportunities for qualified high school students to simultaneously enroll in college courses at our Mississippi IHLs and/or our Mississippi Community or Junior Colleges. JPS currently has agreements with Heinz Community College, Tugle College, and Jackson State University. In JPS, for foreign languages, we offer French, Latin, and Spanish. Note that AP courses and dual-credit courses in foreign languages are also available. Our goal in our strategic plan is to provide an increase of these offerings, including the foreign language, especially at our middle-school level, which can be realized through our recently-approved Optimizing for Equity Plan. At the Career Development Center, courses focused on state and national standards, skills that lead scholars to innovation, creativity, problem-solving, and critical thinking are offered through our Career in Tech Education courses. This program allows our students to earn four to five Carnegie units upon completion of a two-year program and also allows students to earn, as these earn, as the students take the electives, they can be used as earned credits. Students at the CDC have access to such courses as cosmetology, carpentry, mechanics, and culinary arts. And lastly, our Army Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Program, JROTC, focuses on the development of better citizens through the development of skills in citizenship, leadership theory, and application, science, and American history. JROTC is normally completed in four years at a traditional high school for grades 9 through 12. And through our Academies of Jackson, housed at Lanier, Callaway, Provine, and Wingfield High Schools, it ensures that every student has the foundation of knowledge, skills, and character necessary to excel in higher education, career, and life by providing innovative options that prepare them to make critical post-secondary decisions. These academies align with the profile of the JPS graduate. At Lanier, we have our Academy of Health Services. At Callaway, the Academy of Law and Public Safety. Provine has both the Academy of Scientific Innovations and the Hope Credit Union Academy of Business and Finance. And at Wingfield, which houses the Academy of Natural Resource Utilization. And now, for our special programs. Tonight, I will highlight Pre-K, Montessori, the Whole School Initiative Arts Access Program, Academics and Performing Arts Complex, or APAC, the International Baccalaureate Program, and MoEX, the Michelle Obama Early College High School. Our pre-kind, I'm sorry, our pre-kindergarten program seeks to develop rich oral language and a robust vocabulary for our 40-year-olds, allowing them to acquire the knowledge of skills and concepts taught in each subject area, and also to develop social skills and emotional control. Ultimately, we want to ensure that our 4-year-olds are better prepared for kindergarten. The Montessori Program, which is housed at McWillie Elementary School, offers multi-aged classrooms with a strong emphasis on interactive, self-directed learning for preschool and elementary children. This program has 3- to 6-year-old, 6- to 9, and 9- to 12-year-old classrooms. And so, at the heart of the Montessori education program is the emphasis on developing a child's sense of independence, responsibility, and respect for others. And this program is offered to all students in Jackson Public Schools K through 5 through an application process. Casey Elementary School is home to the Whole School Initiative, the Arts Access Program. All students who attend Casey are able to engage in arts integration and arts discipline. The program also includes opportunities for professional learning and community involvement. Casey accepts students zoned for the school and those who are accepted through an application process. APAC, the Academic and Performing Arts Complex. This is, this program is a district initiative. It's open to students who are strong academic achievers and who show an aptitude for one or more of the visual and/or performing arts. Visual and performing arts that are offered through APAC include theater, visual dance, visual, dance performance, and music. The International Baccalaureate Program. The IB Program is a transdisciplinary program of international education designed to foster the development of the whole child. It is designed to help students develop the knowledge, understanding, attitudes, and skills necessary to participate actively and responsibly in a changing world. Our students in JPS have the opportunity to experience IB from elementary to high school. The International Baccalaureate Program is offered as primary year, primary years program at Barack Obama Elementary, the middle-years program at Northwest Jackson and Jim Hill High School. And also, students may go on to attend the diploma program, which is offered at Jim Hill High School for 11th and 12th grade. And lastly, Michelle Obama Early College High School. The MoEX Program was established to help first-generation college students and other underrepresented students earn college credits while in high school. Students may earn an associate's degree or up to two years of credits towards a bachelor's degree. This program operates as a small, independent program on the campus of Tugle College and is available to students through the application process. Currently, MoEX houses 9th and 10th graders for a total of 81 students. For our next steps and opportunities for sustainability. In special courses, our efforts include expanding teacher recruitment efforts. As you know, it's difficult to find teachers who are certified in certain areas. So, we want to ensure that, in addition to just teacher recruitment, that we are assisting teachers who are currently employed by the district to acquire special certifications. We want to increase the variety of course offerings, increase accessibility to our edgenuity courses, which allow for credit recovery, opportunities for students to receive first-time credits, and also provides a teacher of record for other courses, and provide ongoing professional development. professional development. For our special programs, we want to ensure that we're monitoring the effectiveness and alignment of the programs to their true objectives, provide onsite support through the program consultants and also district supports, ensure that resources are consistently updated, and also strengthen collaborations with like schools or programs. Casey Elementary is the only whole, um, school initiative, the Arts Access Program, in our area, and Casey has a, uh, trip planned for Laurel School District, which has the Laurel Magnet School of Arts. So we want to ensure that in addition to those who come to learn from us, that we're allowing our leaders and teachers to go and learn from like schools and programs. And that concludes my presentation.
Board members, are, are there any questions of, uh, Dr. Burke with regard to the, um, special programs?
I'll just say as a parent of a child in some of the programs that, um, it's an incredible opportunity that, that our district has to offer students and families who live in the city of Jackson and just shout out to the team for putting together such a high-quality program. It's done a lot of good for, for our children, so thank you.
Thank you, and a note that, um, our applications for APEC.
Are you open?
Yes, reopen January fifteenth, it was APEC and another program. All special programs, the application process after the approval of the Optimizing for Equity to ensure that all of our students have an opportunity to apply for such programs, the application process reopen January fifteenth, and will close on February fifteenth.
Dr. Burke, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, board members and to those who, um, who are watching, uh, this, this, um, meeting, we will be posting the presentations that are going forward. We'll be posting presentations at our board meetings, um, that our staff, uh, does at the, at the meetings, we'll be posting those to our website so that you'll have access to those following the meetings, um, just so that, uh, for anyone who might have questions or want to refer back. Want to make sure that that information is out for folks. With that, um, President Johnson, I will, uh, turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Um, do we have any participants for a public comment? No participants for a public comment? All right. Next, we have information-only items.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The administration presents for information the revised, um, memorandum of understanding between Tugalu College and Jackson Public Schools. Um, and this revision was made in order to, um, align with the provisions that were provided by the State Board of Education, um, to have an improved innovative school application for all the early college programs. So, um, before we begin, um, as we look at some of the substantive changes to the MOU, we're gonna just give you some, um, brief data on, um, on our early college program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I want to first thank, um, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, School Board President, School Board Members, and our Superintendent for the opportunity to not only be here tonight to show some of the great things that are going on right in the city of Jackson, um, but also I'm, I'm thankful for the opportunity to be able to serve as principal of this, uh, wonderful program. At our school, we have four core values that we emphasize, um, and that's excellence, community, honor, and scholarship, and we try to plan activities that will help students, um, become grounded in those values and carry them out as they, um, move forward in their educational careers and then through their professions. Just a, a piece of information about Mississippi's six early college high schools, uh, there's one in Cohoma, um, they have eighty-six percent of their students who are low-income, seventy-three percent first-generation college graduates. Um, and the Golden Triangle Early College High School has forty-four percent low-income students, forty-five percent first-generation college, uh, students. Greenville Public Schools, they have seventy-one percent low-income students, eighty-six percent first-generation college grads. River City Early College High School has sixty-two percent low-income students, sixty-three percent first-generation college grads. And our Michelle Obama Early College High School, we have forty-six percent low-income students, fifty-seven percent first-generation college grads. And then the Natches Early College High School, they have thirty-nine percent low-income students and twenty-six first-generation college grads. And so early college high schools, uh, do aim to serve underrepresented populations in, um, in college environments. Those could be students who are minorities, those could be students who come from low-income families, those could be, uh, students who would be the first in their family to graduate from college. They also could be students who just would not, uh, thrive in a traditional college setting, and that's why these programs utilize an interview process in addition to the application because you're really looking at the total student and their parents. So they have a separate student interview and a parent interview where you're able to really understand, uh, why the student believes that this environment would be best for them. So I like it because it's really student-driven and not necessarily just the parents apply. So how effective have we been? That's a, that's a great question, and I'm here to answer it. Well, in terms of our attendance, we have ninety-nine percent average daily attendance. Our discipline rate is zero point zero five percent. Um, we have last school year, students earned a hundred and seventy-two college hours. This year, six hundred and ninety-five college hours. Um, the tenth grade students right now are, they, by the end of the school year, they will have between sixteen and twenty-two hours each. Um, so that's your, you know, first semester, freshman year into your, uh, second semester, freshman year. And our, uh, cohort two, which is our ninth graders, they will have four college credits right now. So I tell our ninth graders, you know, you have more credits coming in than the traditional Tugalu students, um, and so they feel special. Um, in terms of ACT, um, we really do value the application and interview process because you're looking for students and the stu, they all repeat it if I say it, we're looking for well-behaved, highly motivated students. Um, they don't necessarily have to be the top in their middle schools, and that's why we seek to go out to the, uh, middle schools to be able to recruit students because this program is for them. We've had, we have students who made all Fs in middle school and are on honor roll now. So it's not just about their academic performance, but in the interview, they get to tell us about why sometimes those, um, um, the grades were where they were and what they would do if they were given an, an opportunity to be in our program. And so these students basically complete the high school graduation requirements by tenth grade, so it's not appropriate for every child, but it is appropriate for many children where they do high school basically in two years, and eleventh and twelfth grade, they're basically Tugalu students. They take the college courses. Um, in order to do that, the Mississippi Department of Education has, uh, benchmarks set for, uh, ACT composite scores and subscores that you need to have in order to take upper-level dual enrollment classes. And so we have a little bit of time to be able to get that done. And so that's one of the things I'm thankful to Mrs. Thomas and this administration for approving is we, uh, really believe in ACT prep. We teach ACT preparation to all of our students, and they take the ACT three times prior to taking the ACT in their junior year. So the junior year, when the state requires it, that will be the fourth time that our students take the ACT. And so our goal is to not only get them ready to be able to enter college classes with no need for remediation, but also to be scholarship-competitive, and that's extremely important since we're talking about low-income, uh, students who might be first-time college graduates. So Mississippi, in two thousand and nineteen, the average ACT score for juniors was seventeen point six, which is down from the year before, which was seventeen point eight. Our average ACT score is nineteen. So for our freshmen who had one semester of ACT prep, the average score was eighteen. Uh, the highest score, uh, was, uh, twenty-four for our freshmen. For our, uh, tenth grade students, the highest score was twenty-nine, um, and the average score overall for our school is nineteen. And so I think that's really good for the students in the tenth grade, just only having been in tenth grade one semester. Uh, they took the ACT the last time on December the fourteenth, and we make it a big deal. We're, I'm out there, we're all out there, we have, uh, ACT day, and we all ta, take the test, they take the test together at one time. And so that was really something we're, we're very proud of. One-third of our students have a composite score of twenty or higher already, um, by this time, so that includes our ninth grade and our tenth graders. Um, again, I said the highest composite score, uh, today is a twenty-nine. That student, the first time he took the test in, um, October of two thousand and eighteen, scored a twenty. In April of two thousand and nineteen, um, he scored a twenty-four and, uh, a twenty-six, I'm sorry, and then a twenty-nine this December. And so the trend is moving up for almost all of the students in our school. Sixty-four percent of the students, um, that we have scored a twenty or above in at least one sub-area, that's English or, uh, reading or, um, science or mathematics. So they already have a twenty or above in at least one sub-score, and they all have a goal, and they are super serious about achieving their ACT goals. Eighty-seven percent of the students right now are, are on honor roll or special honor roll, and that's the thing that they really have to work hard. I just left here because we have tutorial that our teachers volunteer to teach five days a week. So our benchmark to the semester exams, how did we perform? Uh, for Algebra I, the proficiency rate for the district was sixteen percent. Our proficiency rate was seventy-three percent. In Biology, uh, the district's proficiency was twenty-eight percent. Our proficiency was seventy-nine percent. In English II, JPS's proficiency, uh, was nineteen percent. Our proficiency was eighty-two, and in US History, the district's proficiency was thirty-three percent, um, and at our school, seventy-six percent. So I believe we're moving in the right direction. We have not achieved our goals in any of these areas, um, and so we still have much work to do. Um, but again, that's how we performed on the most recent assessment. What makes our school unique? We expose them not only to the fabulous culture and climate of Tugalu College, um, they are be, they are becoming, um, truly a part of the DNA of that, of that campus, and it's, it's been wonderful and it's, it's continuing to develop. Um, but we also take them to visit other colleges, and they visited, uh, colleges like, uh, Georgia Institute of Technology, where we had an activity with them in their Innovation In, In, uh, Institute, uh, which is really unique, um, and really great for students who are interested in engineering. They went to Spelman, Morehouse this year. Um, they've been to Louisiana State, Alcorn, USM, Mississippi State, the University of Mississippi, and Southern University and A&amp;M, uh, in Louisiana. We also have visits, uh, for other colleges in the state, um, for this, this semester, uh, culminating with a visit to Nashville to visit Vanderbilt, Fisk, and Tennessee State Lastly, uh, just a few unique experiences. Um, our students got a chance to participate in the congressional hearing that was held on Tugalu's campus, uh, last semester, uh, regarding the ICE raids, um, and, and they really got to see firsthand, uh, the impact that those raids had, um, on the communities that they impacted and the families of those impacted. Um, and we have several students interested in law, interested, um, in, um, criminal justice, and definitely in social services, and so that was really meaningful for them. Um, they have, we've had over ninety-eight speakers, um, conduct workshops and seminars for our students. Every Friday, we have different industry professionals come in, um, to be able to speak to students because I think a lot of times students change their major because they don't know what other majors are out there, and they think they're interested in this, and then they find out later that they're not. We want them to save money and time and find out in advance, um, and so these industry professionals help us. We also, uh, uh, promote networking, and all of our students are required to have internships moving into the tenth grade, and so these are opportunities for them to meet the people, um, to be able to secure those networking opportunities. We did also have two students to attend Brown University last summer on academic scholarship because they did so well. They gave us six paid slots for this summer coming up because they wanted more of our students to attend, and those scholarships are valued over five thousand dollars, uh, for the two weeks. So, um, those are just a few things, uh, that our students are doing well. And the last thing, because they know I talk a lot, and I'm going to conclude, but our students, um, with our school adopter, Maura, because we didn't have any school adopters until this year, and that's the Mississippi Organ Recovery Agency, um, we wanted to do something for our school adopters, and so, uh, we pitched this idea to them about, um, how can we get more students because they're getting their licenses in high school to register to be an organ donor? And so they have a social media campaign, they're getting trained next week, uh, to become Maura ambassadors, but it's called Put Love on Your License, because you know you get the little heart when you're an organ donor? So they came up with Put Love on Your License, so we encourage you to become organ donors. Um, and so, uh, you'll be hearing more about that, but this concludes my highlights.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Board members, are there any questions?
President, uh, Johnson, I don't have a question, but I would just like to, uh, commend, uh, Ms. Marshall Thomas and Dr. Evans and Dr. Murray, who, as we recall, were working on this, I believe, when this board was first seated, and they, uh, did a magnificent job of, uh, negotiating the birth of this school and, uh, ushered it through a change of administration at Tugalu. And not only, uh, does the student data show that it was a very wise decision to make this happen, that I think it also shows the skill of our administrators and leadership, uh, knowing how to put these good, good programs together, and I just wanted to say that to them from this point.
Thank you.
I, I would like to add, oh, I'm just beaming. Tugalu grad, granddaughter is in this program, and of course, I had to make the choice between her going to the IB program or coming, but she took the initiative to enroll herself in the program, you know? Of course, some of you may know how she can be quite, you know? But anyway. Anyway, uh, she loves it, and it's, it's such an excellent program, and every day we ask her, you know, Cindy, how was school today? And she says, oh, it was great, Granny. We had a great time. We did this, we did that, but one thing she didn't tell me about, you know, I had to talk to you about that. But, uh, I want to just say thanks from a personal standpoint to, uh, Lakita and, um, Dr. Murray and, uh, all the people who worked in this program and everything, and, you know, I hope that is something that we can keep going, and I would love to see more students involved in it, you know, because it's excellent opportunity. You did mention the fact that, um, you, students have also gone to, um, who's the first? You went to the bridge, the Pettus Bridge, and, oh, that trip that, uh, yes.
Yes. Uh-huh. With our US History, oh, I know, okay. Yeah.
I'm so sorry. You all, I love, love, love education. So with our US History classes, I mean, what better way to explore US History than to go see it? So when they're studying the eighteen hundreds, we took them to the plantations in Natchez, Mississippi, where they have working plantations, and, um, and then we also went to the, um, Native American Reserve there because there, these students would think there were only blacks and whites in Mississippi in the eighteen hundreds, but there, there's this whole culture that was going on at the same time. And as we went to Fisk, um, and, um, not Fisk, as we went to Morehouse and Spelman, we stopped and to walk across the bridge, um, in Selma and to visit the, uh, African-American museum there. Um, we always, uh, tour a museum and a college, and then they do something fun whenever we do these college excursions.
Well, I would just say as a historian at Jackson State University, I hope you bring them to see us sometime soon.
Waiting on that.
We have that scheduled.
I was waiting on it.
Mr. Fickers too, he's right next to us, especially if you want civil rights history.
Yes, yes.
But, board, oh, go ahead.
So this is like, um, rethinking education. This is so exciting. I love to hear you talk about it, um, just taking all the barriers off and really giving our children what they need. So I am proud, I'm proud to have been a member of this board at its creation, and of course, I'm biased because I'm also a Tugalu grad.
Board members, um, I, I too want to thank the team, Dr. Murray, who was our interim soup at the time, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, and of course, the amazing, um, Dr. Evans, who just, um, is an amazing ambassador of this program and of early college high. Um, it's been a pleasure to, to work with you all through this, um, and... to work with you all through this. And I do want to acknowledge, and I think it was Dr. Hairston on the phone, who mentioned, you know, the work from its inception. The truth is, and I'm so glad that your experience and what you've seen from the outside is that it's been smooth, because the truth is, there's been a lot of work that the team has had to do from the early, early, from the beginnings of the program to work out all of the logistics. There was a lot of logistical maneuvering and negotiations that the team has had to do behind the scenes, all the while ensuring that these young folks have had amazing experiences. Amazing experiences. You would, they, you would know by what they've experienced and the way that they talk about their experiences, all of the work that, not just our team, but the wonderful folks at Tugalu have had to do to just, you know, make sure that this makes business sense as well, the logistics and the melding of two organizations in this program. And so we'd be remiss if we didn't thank our friends and our partners at Tugalu, and that's Dr. Hogan, the former president, and for sure, Dr. Walters, and the rest of the team, just for all of their support and the way that they welcomed our young people and our team there at Tugalu, and the way that they have dug in there with us to really think through challenges around how to best serve the young folks on the campus. And so we're proud of where we're headed and proud of the hurdles that we've overcome, and very proud of what we'll continue to see in the outcomes for young people. So thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions about the agreement? Any questions or further comments about the agreement itself?
I have a programmatic question. What can we do to make the incoming class more representative of the district this upcoming year? And by that, I mean, if you look at the data around where our middle school students are coming from the last couple of years, it would be great to see, and again, maybe, maybe it's not possible. And so I'll turn that over to Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Well, Dr. Evans actually can talk specifically about some different strategies that we're actually trying. We are actually going to go into the middle schools and speak with the students directly, not just relying upon the application process to be explained to the students. We're going to make sure that the counselors are actually working with the students to complete the applications. The application is online, so sometimes that's a hindrance for students who may not have computer access. So that's one additional strategy. And even like in the past, if we have students that, if we have our numbers, and our numbers are not quite to what we want our numbers to look like, we actually will open the application process back up to allow for some additional schools to complete those applications. So for example, we have some schools where we have received no applications. So we'll extend an olive branch to those schools to encourage students to participate.
That's great. And is there, is there an ACT benchmark they need to meet to get into the program?
No.
There is not?
No, not to get in.
And would you say, is the ACT, do you think taking the ACT three times is definitely an asset for that fourth one?
Yes.
And so I'm wondering if that's a practice we could adopt district-wide?
We've already added one, one additional?
We've, well, what we've done is, we, this year, we offered the practice test, ACT practice test, to our ninth and our tenth graders. And what that does, it allows our students to get exposure to the testing and early, and also to our eighth graders.
Eighth, ninth, and tenth, or eighth and tenth?
Eighth, ninth, and tenth.
Eighth, ninth, and tenth graders.
Okay. Okay. I just don't remember my ninth grader talking about it, that's why. Well, that's great. That's, I was, because there's, this is, as everyone has said, is an incredible program in terms of creating opportunities for people who may not otherwise have them. And so I, A, want to make sure that we're getting it in front of those who need it most in practice, and B, that we're learning from it for the other fourteen hundred students. But I share the sentiments that the board and saying kudos to what we've got, because it's pretty incre, it's another great story in JPS.
Shining the light on our track towards equity, understanding who our young people are and what the needs are, and how we can best serve their needs, meet their needs. Thank you, team.
All right. Next, we have Dr. Cormac.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To members of the board, Dr. Green, the administration is recommending that the board approve the twenty-twenty-one academic calendar for students, instructional staff, and other certified staff members. So each year, our district must set a calendar for students and certified staff members. Two district representatives were part of a process for metro area districts, including K-12 schools, colleges, and universities. Those meetings helped to collaborate on a common schedule and school calendar for metro area schools. This information was used by the District Calendar Committee, which included about twelve district-level leaders, teacher representative, principal representative, to look at our current calendar for this academic year, and to celebrate what it is doing well, and to also offer feedback on its improvement. The committee's goal in developing the academic calendar was to consider this district's commitment to include parent teacher days, staff development days, inclement weather days, and classroom setup days for teachers. The administration has also included professional development hours each month that will be achieved through one early release day each month. So we will continue with that structure of the eighty percent early release days that was targeted this year. Finally, this calendar also includes our planned summer school dates. Just as a note, a special note, spring break does fall in the third week of March, and which our board may want to consider, as you all set, your board meeting calendar for the second and fourth Tuesday. So just wanted to flag that as a special consideration. This calendar recommendation is an effort to be responsive to parents and families, which was called out in our strategic plan Excellence for All.
Dr. Cormac, could you talk a little bit about the changes in the calendar from this year to this year?
For this year to next year.
From this year to next year, sure. So one of the things that was important, that we received feedback and polled the leaders who were part of the calendar committee, was our start date. This last year, we started midweek, and we looked at the data based on our ADA numbers, average daily attendance, and we wanted to be really mindful of a stronger start. And so we looked at data from years where we had begun the school year on a Monday and saw an uptick in the number in terms of average daily attendance. And so that is one change in this current iteration of the calendar. As I mentioned, we'll continue with the eighty percent early release dates. We received positive feedback from teachers and principals about the structure of that design, which our Office of Teaching and Learning has been leading out. Another significant change is just to look at our graduation dates. Just as a note, teachers' calendars and contracts will, their final day will be in May, and it will actually precede our high school graduations. We do that because the rental of the Coliseum actually requires that we do that several years in advance, just to note those particular dates. But in conversation with Ms. Marshall Thomas and the high school team, we think that teachers will come back for the graduation ceremonies. This original calendar also does list out the summer school dates. And so, as you will recall, Dr. Burke backed back in an amended calendar with those dates and some other professional development that we wanted to signal. And we've tried to get all of the low-hanging fruit and have that attended to in the first iteration of the calendar this time.
Thank you. Board members, are there any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Dr. Merritt?
All right, great evening to Attorney Johnson and board members and Dr. Green. You have for your review at this board meeting, the corrective action plan, which I do want to note, first of all, thank you for taking your valuable time to review it. You are to be commended for your leadership. As we received a six-hundred forty-one-page report, our first corrective action plan was four hundred and something pages. And so we've worked it down to a hundred and sixty pages. So we're grateful for that. So we appreciate your leadership, and I do want to commend our standard champions, and I'll make another comment about them later.
Dr. Merritt, is that a metric for success, the number of pages in our strategy?
We're making progress. So for the purposes of this presentation, our we have our objectives, we have two objectives that we want to accomplish with this. One, to just review our progress towards the cap, and I will provide you some updates of the significant changes that, that take place in this corrective action plan. As of today, we have cleared eighteen standards and sub-standards. We're currently working to clear the remaining thirteen process standards that are on record, along with Accreditation Policy 2.1. Just some significant updates to the corrective action plan. Some of the overall implementation timelines have changed, particularly in the area of anything that's related to instruction. Some of the timelines have changed. You may see a March twenty-twenty timeline or a June twenty-twenty timeline, depending on what the standard is. But those are, those are some of the changes that have taken place. Also, this corrective action plan reflects the current organizational structure that the district has, and that's one thing that changed, as well as the titles that align to the position. So for example, we now have an ED of Teaching and Learning. Previously, that was an ED of Curriculum and Instruction. So positions were changed to align with our current organizational structure. For standards seventeen point four and seventeen point six, these are standards that fall under federal guidelines. For both of those standards, I'm happy to report that MDE has monitored some of those standards, some of those findings on those standards. And with both standards, all of the fiscal findings have been removed. Now, there are still some that are remaining, but that's very significant in that the fiscal findings were removed with both standards. Also, in terms of standards seventeen point one kindergarten, seventeen point two pre-K, and twenty point one, the implementation of the instructional management system, as well as twenty point two, the multi-tiered systems of support. Under the leadership of Dr. Burke, some of the strategies were changed in order to address some of the findings that were in the corrective action plan. Of course, there are positions and additional supports that exist within that department to help with the implementation of some of those strategies. Also, as noted, and you will receive an updated cap, possibly by Friday, hopefully, that will reflect, if you see in your corrective action plan where a timeline has passed, that means that it has been addressed, and we are going to indicate completed by that strategy. And an example of that, if you, if the board has addressed a policy in the past, when you address that policy, the date is indicated, August of twenty seventeen, we made that notation. Also, it's noted in terms of, it talks about the strategic plan, it will reflect that that was done July of twenty nineteen. So we will indicate that so that you know that that has been addressed. Currently, MDE is reviewing some standards that we have completed, submitted for review, and that includes standards one point one, one point two, and one point three, which is governance. They are currently monitoring standard eleven. I believe the person that's monitoring that standard has picked up the documentation from review for all schools. Also, the standard, the Program Office for Standard Twenty-Six is reviewing that documentation, and that's looking from, that's looking pretty good, based on some preliminary feedback. And also, with facilities, we're asking for them to come and look at Provi, Vanwekel, and Wilkins as it relates to addressing those schools and the deficiencies that were cited there. Are there any questions that I can respond to at this time? And I do want to, again, commend the standard champions who are doing a great job in monitoring the implementation of the corrective action plan, because it's not easy, and it's an additional task, and it's a lot of work. But we understand, we are, this plan is undergirded by a core value of excellence, and so we know what we have to do in order to achieve that.
And I just want to say, I talked to Dr. Hairston, oh, go ahead, Dr. Hairston.
Well, no, go on. I just wanted to say that, again, we appreciate you and all of the team that has worked so hard to put us in such good shape, clearly a better position than we were not so long ago. And you just don't know how much we appreciate your work, and we're confident we are going to keep on moving up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Appreciate you as well.
When I spoke to her earlier, she talked about how good she felt about the cap plan, so that's high praise. Any other questions, board members?
Just thank you for the background that was shared in advance.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very encouraging, because I don't think anyone wants bad things to happen on our timeline.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Thank you. Attorney Shepherd?
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. To Dr. Green, members of the board, you have before you three policies for review only. Those are IFCA, the textbook policy, ILE, the student purchase of district-issued technology, and JBE, which is the bona fide residence policy. The policy review committee has looked at those policies. We did not recommend any changes, so they, if it's okay with the board, will be placed on the website with a review date of today. Then you also have two policies that do have recommendations for revisions. They are IH, which is currently entitled the Guidance Program Policy, but we are recommending a change to the name, and it will become the Comprehensive School Counseling Policy, or Program. And that revision includes recommendations to abide by the Code of Ethics set forth by the American School Counselors Association. The next policy you have for revision is JBJ, which is the Promotion and Retention of Students Policy. That policy outlines the change of the elementary grade average to a sixty, and it also includes the universal screener language, and it also includes change in the Core Objectives language in the policy to standards. Those two policies will be placed out in the school community for feedback and brought back to you at a next board meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Shepherd. Any questions, board members? Any comments? All right, now we're moving on to information action items. Ms. Miller?
Good evening. Thank you, President Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the board. I have two items tonight for information action. The first is the approval of lease agreement between JR Jones and Jackson Public Schools for sixteen-section land property at sixteen fifteen South Gallatin Street. Just a note, Mr. Jones was a longtime LSE with the district, and a couple of years ago, had to do some other things, and his coming back to us, and we're really excited about this fifteen-year lease agreement with Mr. Jones. Again, he's been a long time LSE with the district, and we're very pleased to have him to come back with us. Again, he's been a long, uh, time lessy with the district and we're very pleased to have him, uh, to come back with us and want to locate back in our building. You want me to go out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the other, um, item B is the approval of the monthly financial report for the month ended December thirty first, twenty nineteen. Of course, uh, board members, this has been presented to you to outline our statement of fund balances. As of that date, our budget status report, our bank reconciliation report, and also our district maintenance cash flow report. I will, um, I do like to make note of the fact that if you look at the fund balance at, um, ending fund balance of eleven twenty district maintenance, it's at twenty-two point six million dollars as of December thirty first. As of December thirty first of two thousand eighteen, our ending fund balance was eighteen point three million. Um, as you are aware, the requirement though is to make sure that we have a positive fund balance and at least at seven percent at June thirty. But we, um, our goal is to make sure we have, um, a growing fund balance at the end of every month so that June, we won't have any issues. Um, to, if you will note, the fund balance in this exceptional education, which is eleven thirty special year, which is right below district maintenance, it's negative one point seven million dollars. That is a timing issue. That is a district maintenance supported fund. And so we just, because of the timing of board material, had not had a chance to move those funds down. So that is, does not indicate that, that exceptional education fund is in the negative with the cash flow, uh, I mean, with the fund balance. Also of note for, um, the budget is that we are still, uh, I think trending in the right direction. As of December thirty first, we've collected forty-three percent of our district maintenance revenue and we've expended only forty-one point nine percent of our expenditures. So as long as our expenditure rate is below our revenue rate, I'm happy. That means we're not spending more than we're bringing in. Um, we have seen some trends, uh, upward trends of our Avalorm collections. If, as you will note, uh, as we move now into tax season or the season that people pay their taxes, we are seeing some trends, uh, in a very positive direction. We will, um, hopefully share a little bit more detail with that to the finance committee at their next meeting, uh, that's coming up in February, I think, Dr. Seback.
Just now.
Um, one of the other things that I do want to make your, um, make atten, make your attention to is the bank reconciliation report. This is, um, and I think Ms., I thank Ms. Hilliard for making sure that we are in, in compliance with the recommendations and the way that, um, MSBA has presented this information. Um, if you will note, a lot of school districts that have financial issues, one of the key indicators to a financial issue is a district or an entity that does not balance their, um, does not reconcile their bank accounts. And so we are committed to making sure that we meet the guidelines, which are to have those reconciled within thirty days of receipt and that we identify any issues. We can quickly identify if we have any issues at a bank account or in an, in an area. And so we are very proud to, to present this to you at this point. This, um, you're seeing a little bit more information than you have probably, um, last year. But we, uh, again, are wanting to make sure that you have, um, all the information that you need to make, um, good decisions. And this report is being presented also for your information and action.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Um, are there any questions, board members? Is there a motion to approve information action items A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Doc, Ms. Hilliard has, um, moved and Mr. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? There being none, the motions are approved. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda items, uh, finance? All of the consent agenda items finance have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity, um, to ask questions of the administration. Are there additional questions? If there are not any question, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda finance?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved and Mr. Figures has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. All of the consent agenda items general have been reviewed by the board previously and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any additional questions, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items general?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Dr. Luckett has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motions are approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All of the consent agenda items personnel have been reviewed by the board previously and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there additional questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Um, Dr. Luckett has moved, uh, Ms. Hilliard has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? There being none, um, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold executive session?
Yes.
There is a consideration to hold executive session. Is there a motion to close the meeting to con, to consider the need to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved and, um, Mr. Figures has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. The, um, meeting is now closed. Thank you.